We'll call the meeting to order.
It is six thirty for the record.
And the first thing is we need to determine if we've got a quorum, and it looks like, let's see, if I can get you guys to call out, Mr. Farley, are you present?
Present.
David Humphrey's chairman is present, that's me. Mr. Patel, I believe, is absent. We have Mike Gilboy is here, correct?
Yep.
So we have four in attendance for the Board of Adjustment, we have a quorum has been determined. So I think everybody has a copy of the agenda. Does anybody wish to make any changes to the agenda? No changes?
No.
Could I get a motion to adopt the agenda as it stands?
David, I'd like to adopt the agenda as it stands. Make a motion to adopt the agenda to keep the agenda as it stands.
And could I get a second?
A second.
A second.
They made you do it.
And we're now in COVID, so they allow the electronic participation, but a lot of times the boards will go ahead and make a motion just to confirm that a member can participate remotely. Do y'all want to do that for Mr. Farley? Just a motion to allow...
Oh, oh. Two members here that are virtual, so just that someone in the room can make a motion to allow the people that are virtual to participate.
I see. Yes, so I'd like to make a motion that Mike Farley and Mr. Monher, Tom Monher, can participate in this meeting from a virtual setting.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I have a vote.
All in favor say aye.
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 So we have two motions to adopt the agenda, all in favor say aye.
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 So we'll adopt the agenda as it stands.
Who seconded that last motion?
Um, Mr. Gilboy.
That's right, that's right, okay.
We need to move on to approval of the minutes from our meeting we just had on October 28th. And I guess you've had time to look over the meeting minutes, do anyone, does anyone have any objections to the meeting minutes as they stand?
I do not.
Could I get a motion to accept the meeting minutes as they stand?
Motion to accept the meeting minutes as they stand?
The meeting minutes of 10:28?
The meeting minutes of 10:28?
Thank you, and could I get a second motion to adopt the meeting minutes of October 28, 1920, uh, 2020, that's been a long time ago.
I was in, I was in a...
I'll second that.
Alright, so Mike Farley seconds that motion, all in favor say aye. Aye. So approval of minutes of the previous meeting of October 28, 2020 has been adopted.
And you can sign them later.
Alright. I thought I'd just signed.
That's, that's the ones you just approved.
That's the ones I just approved, thank you very much. We'll move on to the hearing of the case. This is public hearing of case number 20-12532, seeking a variance to build a pool in the rear yard, smaller setbacks than allowed, in ordinance number 151.054.
Ask for motion to open a public hearing?
Okay, could I get a motion to open the public hearing for this variance?
Motion to open the public hearing?
I'll second, good.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we can move ahead with hearing of the case.
And can I give a brief explanation?
Certainly.
Uh, my name's Chaplain Spencer, I'm the village attorney, and I'm just going to give a brief synopsis because there, a lot of people don't know the rules, and these don't come before the board very often. This is a request for a variance, so therefore it's what we call a quasi judicial hearing. They love the quasi and the judicial and the Latin terms, but basically it means you're going to hear evidence as if it was a court of law, but it's more relaxed rules of evidence, but you base your decision on what you hear during this meeting, and then you make the findings a fact. So the other, so that's the first thing, is you make your decision on what you hear presented tonight, you look at the evidence and make a decision. The second part of that is because it's quasi judicial, we get, any witnesses that are going to be presenting evidence, which would include the staff and the applicant, will get sworn in to present evidence. And then your next point with this, since it is a variance, you have to have what we call a super majority vote. You have to have a four fifths percent, y'all have one vacancy, so you cannot hit the 80% with a three out of four, so it basically would need to be a unanimous vote, because you have to have the four fifths, which is 80%. And that is it, and after this is presented, I can go over briefly some of the findings on how you do that, but that would be after you hear the evidence to close the public hearing, I'll be happy to do that if you want a summation at that time. Make sense?
Yep.
Alright, so will you swear, anybody that's going to present evidence?
It looks like it would just be myself and the applicant.
Yep, so it usually is.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this hearing is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I swear.
Can you come over there?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
It looks like there are no people in attendance physically or virtually that would otherwise testify, so...
And I've got a housekeeping matter.
Sure.
That's good. Mr. Gilboy, you just informed me that you...
I personally know Mr. Howard, so...
You know the applicant.
It's not going to affect my decision, but I just want, I just have to let you know that...
You just, my next question, can you still make a fair and impartial decision?
Yes, we had met before, so, you know.
And you can still base it on this, and that's not going to impact it?
Correct.
Thank you for the disclosure, and if there are any other material disclosures that anybody needs to make, if you don't think you can be fair and impartial and rule upon what you hear tonight, let me know, otherwise we'll proceed.
Yeah, that would be either any personal relationship with the applicant or any ex parte communication that occurred before this hearing.
Yeah, and you would need to disclose if ex parte communication.
That is just if you spoke with the applicant before tonight. No? Okay, great.
Okay, everybody can be fair and impartial, thank y'all for confirming that.
Alright, then I will begin with the explanation of this. Let me bring this over here for a second. I'm going to be needing to do a little bit of looking at the screen and talking at the same time, so... Nope. Yep, 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 okay. Okay, so the applicant, Mike Howard, has designed a pool and he's requested to seek variance from the ordinance that states that a pool shall be located 20 feet from the rear yard property line. The pool design is shown here as follows. The rear yard is to the left, the house is to the right, and the pool is designed as follows. The closest point is going to be, would be 13 feet, and the, it's like the farthest point is roughly 15 or maybe 16 feet if you count it from here. But the minimum is 20 in our normal R residential zoning, so that's the, that's the ordinance that he's seeking a variance from. One second, I'm going to pull up the property situation. The property is bordered in the back by, property owned by Club Corp, it is a golf course, and, well, you can see here, this is, this is the property in red, and golf course is behind it. There are some neighbors to the left and right. And that's pretty much all I have to say to describe the situation. There is, I think I'll just, I'll leave it to you now to explain any evidence that you have, and I do have the email that you have, so you can present your evidence now.
Does everyone have copies of the email as well as the HOA approval?
I'll show it on the screen.
Okay, well first, I guess, it's pretty simplistic, my backyard is not that big, and I have three, two small kids and an 18-year-old. My goal was to get my pool as far away from my house as I can for safety reasons, so the impetus really was, was driving, the request for, the exception was for safety, to move the pool a little bit further from my...
Hey, I'm sorry, I'm having a tough time hearing.
Sorry.
You were talking about your goal?
Yeah, yeah, the goal is, is safety, trying to, trying to move the pool farther away from my home, I have a small backyard, as you can see from the image up on the screen, in order to get enough distance between my house and the pool, it would encroach, again, on that 20-foot limit.
So what do you want me to pull up first?
So I've spoken to Club Corp, and they have sent an email, a letter with their blessing on...
Okay. I'm going to ignore everything else on the screen, this is the evidence, this is, at first these evidence here...
Can you send this to me?
Yes, I'll send all of this to you in the end. This is an email from Club Corp, you can take a moment to read this, I didn't want to send it to you in advance because you have to receive all the evidence at the meeting.
Can you read it, Robert?
Yeah, sure, I'll read it out loud, probably good for the record, too. It says, "Good afternoon, Mr. Howard, and thanks for reaching out. With young kiddos, it sounds like you'll be making good use of this pool for years to come. We don't have any objections regarding the setback exception you described below. You are welcome to share this email with the exception board. We typically don't provide a formal letter because of how many homeowners there are."
So he is the general manager of Firethorn, which is owned by Club Corp, and speaks on their behalf.
Right, and then...
The general manager of the entire neighborhood, or...
Uh, Firethorn Country Club. Yeah, and I also, I also have a letter from the HOA with approval.
So Rohit, can we just take a quick peek at the request that went to Josh from Mr. Howard?
Sure, it's down here. We're, it says, "I have a quick question/favor. We're building a pool, see attached plans, and our design exceeds its 20-foot setback by about six feet. We have small kids and didn't want the pool too close to our house. We have HOA approval, but I'm going in front of the Marvin Exception Board on Wednesday to pitch my case for the exception. Would you be willing to write a brief, write a brief letter supporting the location? If you're not familiar with our property, it's located in a home number 11, backside of the hill on the left."
Thank you.
Let's see, and I'm going to move this away for a second so I can pull out the HOA.
Cool. Did you send that to me as well?
I think I included my original letter to you, but here is a copy.
Yeah, I don't think you sent it, not sure that I've seen it yet.
And I'll need a copy of that for the record.
And they're the ones that suggested that I, that I need to approach Marvin about the exception, that they have signed off on the design and my request for exception.
Alright, what I'll need to do, you guys will give me just a moment, I'll need to scan this so that I can both copy it and put it on the screen for the virtual people.
Chaplain, are they be able to ask any questions while we're waiting?
I didn't, I didn't make a copy, but pass that around, that's just a picture from my back. What I'm trying to illustrate there is...
You'll need to put it up on the screen.
Yeah, I'll get ready to scan that, too.
What I'm illustrating there is I have a big mound, so there's, regardless of how we deal with it, we know, you wouldn't even be able to see my pool from the course, away my back, that mound is...
Are you entering this as evidence?
Sure, yep.
And where are we looking from?
That is from my, the back of my home, the top is, I believe the top picture is from my elevated porch, and the bottom picture is from ground level.
Rohit, you might want to have Rohit just scan those in while he's doing that, so Tom and I can take a gander at those.
You mean the pictures?
Yeah.
Yeah, he is.
He is, you're going to, we're going to make sure y'all can see all the evidence.
That's right, thank you.
Sorry, I'm trying to do, you know, trying to cap for both physical and virtual, takes a little longer, but while, while there being made copies of, I'm going to pull out first what we described, which was the HOA approval. I'm going to put this a little bit up here. Okay, so this is, the first page is just the submission. Second page shows that the architectural review application has been approved, subject to the conditions noted below, those conditions must be satisfied prior to the start of site preparation and construction, and then it goes on to describe the condition as, "Suggest checking with Marvin Village regarding the minimum setback distance of the pool's water edge to the rear yard, the rear lot line." And also says, "One tree to be removed as shown on the plot plan." If you do get this approved, you'll need to submit a tree removal permit, just a heads up. Third page is a description of the Architectural Review Committee and some general guidelines. I think the first one's really the only one relevant to this case, because the rest of it's for buildings. Requirements, yeah, I think, I think really only the page with, and this is the submission, this is part of the submission package, but really only the page with the notes here are what are relevant to this application, that the committee received and approved the pool contingent on the applicant seeking a variance.
Rohit, as you look at this, or Mr. Spencer, as you look at this, this provides that that tree removal from the homeowners association is passed?
Yes, subject to this, and also you could make, if you decide to grant the variance, you go through each of the four required findings, and then you make a motion to approve or deny, and if one of them fails, it should be a motion to deny, because it has to be, but then you can also request any conditions, if you need something, and if you wanted to add in and confirm the tree removal, you could add that as a condition.
Yeah, so it appears that, so one of the conditions here, the lot, lot owners adjoining the golf course shall not cut or clear trees larger than six inches within 20 feet of the lot line, but here it's given the approval, that one tree to be removed, that shown on the plot plan, so it does look like he has the approval from the HOA to remove that tree, but he still has to submit a tree removal permit from our perspective.
So I guess in full disclosure, that tree has been removed?
Ah, well, you should also...
And yeah, that was just, I saw that, I thought that was my green light, so...
Yeah, well, that's, that happens sometimes, just submit a tree removal permit anyway.
Okay.
And I read that the same way, is, they're just saying if he gets it, if he gets board approval, he's bound to remove it.
Does this actually constitute testimony, or is this not hearsay?
There are relaxed rules, so you can present, and he can say that, you know, we've got this, and you can, you can weigh that, you can weigh the evidence and go, well, I have questions about this, and if you could question the veracity of it, but we have relaxed rules in a, in a hearing like this.
The guy signing that is, is by the book as there is, so I personally know Mr. Ott, who approved all that, and he, he plays by the rules more than anyone else.
So are you testifying for the applicant?
Well, not testifying, he's, he is being the judge, like y'all, y'all, and looking how to weigh the evidence, so he's saying because he knows who signed this, he's, he's given deference to this confirmation.
Alright.
And there's another piece of evidence that was submitted, it's just pictures of, it's the pictures of the view from the applicant's backyard into the golf course. Wait, what are the, what is the difference between these two pictures?
One is the ground, one is the porch, when you stepped out, I was explaining why I took those, there's a mound here, so from the, from the golf course perspective, Mike would know this, you can't, wouldn't be able to see my pool, it's an obstruction, so just...
It's like a berm, right?
It's a berm, yeah.
That's where the applicant was pointing on the screen.
Not necessarily going into this necessarily, but just adding to the conversation.
Can I, can I ask a question? If we're, if the plan is for safety, and you're moving the pool away from your house for safety, you know, you've played the golf course, I've played the golf course, golf balls can come flying into your property, how are you, if potentially this is approved, how are you going to prevent safety from being so close to the golf course?
So, so two types of safety, number one, small kids, I'm thinking drowning, that's my, that's where my head's going. We live on a golf course, I live, my home's built on a golf course, but I knew when I bought the lot, and I built the house, and run that risk, but what I am going to do is put up a barrier of pine trees, just, just for privacy and for golf balls, and if you know that spot, which, which you do, you don't get, I don't get many golf balls where I am, it's not, it's not a big concern, like drowning would be...
I'm just asking the question because, you know, there are lot owners in Firethorn who's, who have built things and, and, you know, after building them, complain that there's golf balls flying in there and stuff like that, I'm just asking...
Yeah, I do get a few...
Because you're concerned with safety, I'm just asking safety both ways, that's why I'm asking the question, so...
Do we have more testimony?
Do you have any other evidence?
I don't, nope.
So, okay, I also don't have anything else, so...
Let me ask some questions. Mr. Howard, how would this cause you a hardship if you were denied this variance?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, well, if I didn't have a variance, I would not build a pool, and the hardship would be the risk of having the pool too close to my house, just parental concern.
What, what is the distance from your house you're building it? Or potentially...
Yes, I don't know the exact, is that, see what's drawn up there?
It doesn't show the distance between the pool and the house, but it also, it appears to be around 10 to 12 feet, if this is the scale.
So if the variance is denied, you would build the pool closer to your house?
I would not.
What would you do?
I'm not building a pool.
So how is your property significantly different from that of your neighbor's?
My, my lot, in my neighborhood, I had a swell, my lot was vacant for 20 years, when I built the house, and there was a big crater in the back, so we had to situate my house closer to the property line in the back because of how years of erosion took out a lot of topsoil, so it was really narrow backyard, much more so than my Johnson's to the right, my neighbor's to the, to the left.
That appears to be true. Rohit, how far is their pool from the lot line? Give me one second. Looks like they have 36 feet from the, the water's edge to the property line.
Can you go right there, Rohit, to?
This way?
No, thank you, it's not on the line.
That pool to the property line, yep, that, take it to the right?
To Mr. Howard's property line.
I see.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's 28 feet from the water's edge to the side property line?
Mr. Howard, you built your house, right? I did. We had the lot for about 10 years, and built in 2015.
Rohit, can you tell me when this accessory use and structure ordinance was put into effect?
I sure can, if you give me one second. It was originally passed in 1996. Yeah, originally passed February 1996.
Okay. And Firethorn came into the village what year?
Firethorn was in the original annexation in 94, but the neighborhood wasn't built until a few years later, is that correct?
Right, but the neighborhood was annexed in 94?
Is the property that eventually did become Firethorn was annexed in 94, that's correct.
It was incorporated with the original.
Right, incorporated in the original, you know, incorporation in origin. I'm trying to find, yeah, I'm trying to find this again, the, check this. House was built in 2014, that's correct?
I moved in in 15, yeah.
Mr. Howard, do you have any statements from your neighbors at all?
I, I do not, my neighbor to the right, Robin Johnson, would gladly write a statement. I was more focused since I'm going to encroach on Firethorn's property, so I'll reach out to them, but, but the ones to the right would have no problem with what I'm proposing, would gladly state that. And I don't know my neighbor to the left, I don't live there.
You don't have any other evidence about the property that would have caused you to have been placed in a situation where this is, you know? Who created such a small backyard?
I don't, no, just, it was a roof, and not a big, a big hole, it was a fortune to put my house, I have 180 pylons, my foundation, my lot was a, a blend-in, if you will. So, and that's why it's so far back.
I think, I'm not going to speak for the chairman, but I think he's, I think he's trying to ask, why is, why did, did you ever think about building a pool and sliding, when building your house?
I want to know if there's evidence to show that he had to build the house, and that was...
Yeah, I would say, did the house, could you have brought the house closer to the street?
I did not, that was as far as I could get to the front, based on the design of my house, that was the absolute, only location.
We might have touched on this, I'm looking at page 11, where it talks about the zoning, said the property is zoned R Marvin residential, if the Firethorn, the neighborhood was built using Union County R40 standards.
Right, right.
As such, the property setbacks and sizes are smaller. So is this 20-foot setback, is that a Union County rule, or is it a Marvin?
The 20-foot setback for pools is a Marvin rule.
It is a Marvin, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But what, what I mean to say by that is that when Firethorn was originally built, they had some 15-foot side yard setbacks, our minimum's now 20, so that's why you see these houses are, you know, closer together than perhaps what you would find in a, a more newer neighborhood like the Preserve. And they have, they have, they have a lot more room in the side yards and the, in the backyards because they're built with our current zoning.
And Rohit, the reason is because the, the lots were subdivided before the annexation, even though they weren't built, correct?
Um, I don't know that for a fact.
Well, if they weren't subdivided, they would have been under our current ordinance.
Right. I think it's more so that we didn't start enforcing our zoning until around 2004, 2006 or so.
Okay.
In neighborhoods that were built between our incorporation and that time, like Marvin Creek Phase 1.
Did this fall under the county's zoning ordinances?
Yeah, it fell under the county's zoning ordinance.
That's it, okay.
Rohit, I have a question.
Thank you.
The R 40 means that the home had to be 40 feet, more than 40 feet from the back lot, from the back property line, right? Is that what it means compared to R 45 would have been 45 feet? Is that, is that the difference in the rules?
No, I think, let me, let me Google this real quick, but I'm pretty sure it has to do with the size of the lot.
That, that is.
Yeah.
So that's the county designation?
Yeah, the county designation, yeah, it's 40,000.
140,000 square feet.
Yeah, 40,000 square foot lots.
Basically one acre lots is R 40.
Yeah, as opposed to like R 4, R 8, which are 4,000, 8,000 square foot lots.
Okay.
But Marvin's R zoning is more like one acre lots, which is slightly bigger than R 40, because an acre.
So that would explain why Mr. Howard's lots, what do we say, 2.72?
Right.
Because it was built during Union County standards.
It was built with their standards before the village imposed its zoning ordinance.
Right, right.
And Michael, when you were talking about your neighbor to the right, is it to the right if you're standing on the street?
Correct, the Johnson.
Okay.
That would be the house I have highlighted now.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
You know, I, I was curious, because I was, I'm looking at that line, something Clint and Michael's lot line here. I mean, it looks, I mean, that, that red line to me, it looks like it's parallel to the back of your house, which is where the pool is going. And then when you see the image with the blue pool and the wired fence and it's, it looks like it's kind of at an angle, but I guess that fence doesn't represent the property line, right?
It's, it's the way my house to be, the back right, if you're facing it, is curves out. So that's why I had it come out.
I think he's referring to how the, how this line is kind of at an angle, whereas the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it looks like this is kind of a.
It's not parallel with the other.
Yeah, well.
It's still moving.
I think, I think I could also, if I tilt my head a little bit, I can see that the property line is at a, at a slant. I don't know, can I, can I look through this? I don't think I can really do this screen.
Rohit, I have one more question.
For me? Sure.
No, for Mr. Howard.
Oh, go ahead.
How, how wide is this potential pool? Like, is this design locked in stone, like this is what you're going to do? Or, you know, if, if the motion is denied, would you, could you potentially change the, the design of the pool to, to fit in the, in the current standard?
My only option, as I see it, is, is to move the slide pool closer to the house, which I don't feel comfortable doing, to make it any, any less wide, to shrink the width, it just, it's, it's not worth the investment that I'm, I'm willing to make.
So a long, a long skinny pool would not be?
Well, that is pretty long and skinny, this is just a, a teen leg, if you will.
What are the potential dimensions of the pool that I do?
Yeah, we see an 18-foot width as the narrowest part and 37-foot length, 37, 11 inches. Can you be able to see these dimensions here?
Yeah.
Is that a pretty, Rohit, you, you guys approve a bunch of pools, is that a pretty standard size?
Yeah, that's pretty standard. I think 16 is the smallest width I've seen.
Mr. Rohit, you have anything left more to add?
I don't.
Mr. Howard, anything more to add?
I don't.
Mr. Farley, Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I've got one additional question. Rohit, if you look at the announcement that came out, I'm not sure what page number it is, but it references the accessory use instructions, right there, yep. And you highlighted the 20-foot rear yard. Can you confirm that all other measurements are in the, in the ordinance?
Ah, so you're asking if all other measurements are in compliance, yes?
Correct.
Yes, the side yard setbacks are plenty in compliance, it's, oh, hmm. You'll have to, you'll have to locate the pool equipment. It looks like, it looks to be here, but I also need to see that the pool equipment is.
It, it is, it's up on, if you show my, my log, I'll show you, it's up with, I have four recent units, can you relate next to recent units?
Or wood.
Here.
Oh, you want me to pull out?
Yeah, so, right here.
Okay.
Be right there.
So. No tools, 38, 32, that's more than 20, so yeah, the pool equipment would be compliant. The side yard, the other side yard setbacks would be well in compliance and you'll also have to provide 90% screening from all of your neighbors with evergreen trees, so pine trees are not, like, like unless they actually.
That's what I meant, yeah, to, to Rohit's point, you want to shelter from golf balls as well.
Yeah, equipment as well.
And Rohit, that's an ordinance requirement, correct? The screening?
Yeah, screening is already.
So, so there's no request for a variance from that, so you would have to comply?
Right, right. The other, the other thing would be the 15-foot rear yard setback for the pool decking. Go in here and see that the decking would also not be within 15 feet of your property line, so technically you're asking for a variance for that as well.
So what is that measure?
It looks to be something like, let me see the plot plan. Deckings are usually about four feet wide, so that would be somewhere around eight or nine feet from the property line.
So that would be in that, from the area, correct?
I don't know if that's for a fact.
And Rohit's question?
The question is, would the decking be built in the burned area?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's 8.5 feet.
Okay. So then that burn, does that burn go away?
No, it does not. There's going to be a wall, we're adding, we would add a wall in this scenario. Can you bring that back up so I can get my bearings?
Oh, you want me to bring up the aerial?
Well, the, the pool itself, so we have a wall structure put here, just a, it's, it's, it's not really a barrier wall, it's more aesthetics.
Can you point to it again so I can mark it accurately?
So already have an existing wall here, and we're just going to, we're going to carry it around.
Is it like a retaining wall or is it just?
It's not even that high. It's a, in fact, by the time you get to the pool, it's about three feet and it goes all the way down to about six inches.
So it's just a decorative wall?
It's a decorative, yeah. For aesthetic purposes.
Yeah, that wall can be seen in some of the renderings here.
What will happen to the actual berm? Is it, is it getting, is it going to be behind the wall or is it?
The berm is right, so this, this is not a good.
Let me, let me.
Illustration, that fence, yep, the berm is inside my fence, that fence is going to be, cannot be moved.
So the berm will be between the wall and the fence?
Correct.
So then there's two, two.
Yeah, that's correct, there's going to be two, I mean, it's, it's one ordinance, but there's two parts of the same ordinance that the variance would be sought for, the, the rear yard setback for the pool and the rear yard setback for the decking.
I'm sorry, what's the second one?
The rear yard, the 15-foot rear yard setback for the decking, that's a really good point, I definitely missed that when I was going through this first, sorry. I'll go through this back, or that, something like that. This, right here. The decking would be eight feet five inches from the property line at the closest point.
And what did you say the pool was going to be, based on your estimates, Rohit?
Uh, the pool, what about it?
At the closest point?
Uh, closest point was, uh.
You're talking about the decking or the pool?
Yeah, I can see.
The decking or the pool.
The pool.
I think it's in there here, 15 feet, two inches.
Uh, at the closest point, it would be 13 foot one inch here, and then the decking would be eight feet five inches.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm also.
Farley, you're okay? Mr. Maher, you're okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
All good.
Do we need to close the hearing before we?
That'll be it, motion to close the public hearing.
If I could get a motion to close this public hearing.
Make a motion to close the meeting?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, force another meeting?
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will now close the public hearing of case 20-12532, and we can now start our deliberations. So, so let me just point out, so we are required to, to, to remind everyone, we're required to make our determinations based off the evidence presented here this hearing. And we have to see, we have to find that it meets the requirements here, that we have these four requirements, practical difficulties and hardship, variances in harmony with general purpose, granting of the variances, keeps in public safety and welfare and substantial justice has been done, the reason set forth in here is granting the variance, there's a minimum one, and it will make possible reasonable use of land or structures. Does anyone have any comments they want to make before?
And Mr. Spencer, you could just confirm, we all have to be in agreement on all four of these findings of fact, is that correct? If, if one of us, if one of us has an issue with one of the four findings of fact, that becomes a, a negative procedure?
That, that is correct, because you have to make all four findings and, and you could easily find that, you know, that, you know, safety, you could all agree on that, but you may have a dispute on something else, so it could easily be the case if you don't find an affirmative, and you go through each one, so you don't have to find all of them in the affirm, you don't have to find all of them in the negative to deny, but you do have to find all of them in the affirmative.
Right.
And then at the end, based upon those four, you will make a vote to grant or deny, and if you grant, if you want to put any special conditions, you can do so, and maybe being in accordance with the plans, or no more than 8.5 feet closer on the decking and then the, no more than 13.1 for the pool.
Well, let me just say that my, my biggest concern is that to see that substantial justice has been done, he would have to have property that, and for whatever reason, is significantly different than that of his neighbor's, so that we're doing justice because for some reason his property was left in a condition, was put in a condition where it would create a hardship for him. I haven't seen the evidence that that's the case. I mean, we've talked about it, but I haven't seen the evidence that indicates that this property is all that different from any of his neighbor's property.
What, is this an open dialogue?
That is up to the board, if they want to allow you, they have heard all the evidence, and they can let you comment, but they're stuck to base it on the evidence.
Fair enough.
And a lot of times, they want this to be their time.
Got it.
But sometimes they let people speak, that is up to the, to the board, so I gave a wonderful legal answer of not my decision.
If you'd like to speak, that's.
I, I mean, I have $100,000 in telephone poles in my yard, that would be, I would think by showing you that receipt, that would be evidence to show the hardship of, of why my house is situated.
Do you have the receipt with you?
No.
So we don't have the evidence.
No, that's all right, no problem, I don't have it, thank you.
We don't have evidence that shows that there was a reason that you had to build the house where it is, and so from my standpoint, and I have to, I'm required by the state to make my judgments based off of the evidence presented at this hearing, and there's nothing to indicate to me that the house and the property is in such a condition that it was something that was beyond your control.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sir?
Can he ask for a continuation of the meeting to, or what is it called, where you pause a meeting and?
He, he, he could do that, y'all have the, the dauphins. Also, he doesn't necessarily have to provide receipts, but Apollo, you can look at the veracity of his statement, it is under oath, and he said that he couldn't build there because, but you, you can look at it and judge, that's the weight of the evidence you want to give that, so you could say, yeah, well, I looked at the lots and it is, it is built closer, or further back from the front, and he, he gave a reason, I believe that, or you could say, well, it's just like other lots in the Firethorn neighborhood, and it's just not peculiar, but I do think you, you could look what you heard and listen to that and make a determination that it's different because of that, or you could also say, most of these other lots are the same size, and it's just not that much different. But I think you have enough, I think y'all have enough to make either, either finding, and that's why you're a buddy, it's to make, make that, and there's enough in the record. And that's y'all's determination, you either think it's different enough or you don't.
Right.
Rohit, could you do me a huge favor? Could you pull back that knock right there and just pull the setbacks of, of his neighboring properties, from the house to the property line?
Closest point is about 45 feet, 40 or something. Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, and then if you went down to the next house, his neighbor.
Sure. You roughly 80, oh, maybe that's a little past the line, but you got 81 feet there, 83 feet there.
But can you do that next one, that, that, that pool?
Sure, sure.
Just to the, yeah, that one right there.
58 feet for that one.
What about the pool to the lot line?
32 feet from the pool to the lot line. Want me to do any more?
No, thanks.
No.
Okay.
Good, I was going to have you reopen if you went much further, but you already did that, looking at the others, and you were just explaining, and he can explain matters, but not present new evidence unless you reopen, which is fine.
So David, just to, I, I agree with you that there's nothing on this property that on. that, um, provides a hardship. I, I do think that if you look at the, um, where the, where the property is situated, and that was a, a decision that Mr. Howard made, um, when he built the home, that, that was a, a just a conscious decision to put the, the house on that property. I, I would say that the spirit, in my mind, uh, the spirit of the ordinance is really to protect, um, one, to protect, uh, the safety of, um, uh, the occupants, but also to protect the integrity of the neighborhood, integrity of the neighbor, the, the neighboring property, if you will. And so that's where I'm kind of, uh, struggling with this a little bit.
Well, so if you look at the house right across the street from them, they can't put a pool in their backyard. Shall we give them a variance too? So, when I, when I look at the term substantial justice, if you live in Firethorn, and this is how the lots are built, that's how your neighborhood is done. And so, everyone, everyone in Firethorn shares those sort of common hardships.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that there was a, a decision made on where that, where that, uh, structure was built originally, that, uh, kind of forced the hand here. Um, but unless the pool is reduced by, um, roughly ten feet, uh, you know, it's not going to fit in the ordinance, as we've gotten stated.
Right.
You know, and, and the other piece to this is that, um, you know, it, it, there's really two parts to this, uh, ordinance, and that is the pool decking and the pool. It's not just a water line.
Exactly. And that's another concern of mine, I just had you beat me to it. So, we're not really looking at a, a setback issue of fifteen feet, we're looking at a setback issue of merely eight feet, five inches.
Right. And that's, that, that's difficult for me as well. At least on the ordinances, we've got it.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments? Am I pronouncing your name correctly?
It, it's actually Maher, because I get that a lot.
Do you have any comments?
Well, you pointed out the house across the street, that, you know, you know, we're gonna have to come back and hold a, hold another meeting for a similar situation. You know, we've checked several boxes there, right? You've got the genuine of the club approval, so the golf course isn't an issue. You've got the HRA box checked, so that's not an issue. You've got one of the two neighbors that would green light it. And in the training material that I was looking at from two thousand and five, it said something along the lines of will not injure the value of the adjoining property. And, and I don't think this would. But then when you pull up that list of hardships... Thank you.
So I don't see, first of all, I don't see where the hardship is. I don't see where the hardship is peculiar to the applicant's property. And I kind of see that, to me, if there is a hardship, it is the result of the applicant's own action.
I think the hardship is, is that he won't be able to build this particular pool, right?
I don't see that as a hardship.
Yeah, I, I would agree that it's not a hardship to not be able to build that particular pool.
Mr. Gilboy, any comments?
I get the purpose of the, of the rules, I think. You know, I think, as Mr. Maher said, I, I don't think this, you know, negatively affects his, his neighbor's properties. I'm, I'm leaning towards, I, I'm okay with it. You know, is, is it possible to remove the decking from that side of the pool so that, you know, it becomes, we're not talking eight feet, we're talking more like, you know, just remove the decking and have the wall, have, you know, less decking? I understand what he's trying to do for the safety of his, his family, and...
So why don't we go through this, and we'll just all, we'll, we'll say our piece, so, let me end.
David, yeah, but can I ask, uh, Mr. Spencer, how do you define a hardship here? Just give us some counsel on that.
Um, the hardship, or i- if you look on the, the screen?
Yep.
That, that's what it's, what you're really looking at, is this, this five points. But it still says hardship, it says hardship, it's just a, a great difficulty, an undue burden.
So?
I think, I think in an ideal world, he wouldn't have built the house, you know, based on what the lot he, he had. In an ideal world, he, if the lot was a perfect lot, he wouldn't have built the, the house as close to the back lot, as, back line of the property as he had to.
Is the hardship the result of the applicant's own action?
I think the hardship's the result of the, the lot being, being, was there, would, can I ask a question? Would you say it was a crater? What was the prop, the problem with the lot?
Ten years of erosion.
Ten years of erosion.
Made a, made a fifteen-foot crater. It was almost unbuildable.
And, and I, if there wasn't a crater there, the house probably would have been closer to, to the front of the prop, to the, towards the street, you know?
I almost didn't build, I don't want my house that far back, correct?
And what's in the allocation now?
I think the hardship is the erosion factor, that...
So, so you would say the hardship is not, is not, um, because of the applicant's own action?
No, I would say the hardship is due to the erosion.
Mike, would you say the hardship is due to the applicant's own action?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I, in my mind, it is, uh, it's whether he could or couldn't put the house in, in the, in that exact, uh, or he had options to put it. I, I just don't, I don't know that, so I can't make, based on the evidence that was provided to me. Uh, so I can't make that judgment. But I don't think, um, in my mind, that, uh, that, that property created a hardship.
Mr. Maher, do you believe that the hardship is the result of the applicant's own action?
Well, why don't we, um, do a motion?
Okay.
Instead, and I think, I mean, y'all have got evidence on both sides. I think it'll be, you know, there, there are, or you're, you know, finding the affirmative that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary...
You're talking about doing a motion for each finding of fact?
Yeah, and then they can go ahead, and, cause they, it'll lead to be there are, um, practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter, or there are not. And if there are, um, you could say, because the, the home had to be built , um, close to the front because of the, the difficulties on this lot. Or if you don't think there are practical difficulties, there are not practical difficulties, and I think you'll say, this is just like the other lots in the neighborhood, it's, it's a smaller lot, and there's just not room. It's, it's like other lots. It'd be one of those two, and then make your votes, and I think y'all can make your determination there, rather than narrow it down.
Um, yeah, that, that works, and that'd be much more expedient. Um, I didn't understand to make the motion toward...
So it'll be, um, if you're in favor of granting the ordinance, variance, your five?
That's all right.
Um, it'd be, I'd like to make a motion to find that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the law, because, and then you would state the reason. And if you are against it, I'd just say, I would make a motion that there are not practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter, because, and then make the vote. Really, just try to make it in the, um, the affirmative, there are, and if nobody votes in the affirmative, it loses.
Do we need a motion, or we just vote on it?
Well, I would do a motion.
Okay. Rose, you want to say something?
Yeah, I was, I was wondering, um, I think that in my memo was a description of, there's a description of what is a hardship, and then there's some findings of fact. I was wondering what you were referring to, which...
That's the findings of fact there, right?
No, 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 that was a description of a hardship.
Oh, it's hardship, okay.
The way I see it here is, these are the four findings of fact.
Those are the, you, yes.
Yeah, so, and, and sometimes when, uh, for example, the council is voting on conditional use permits, they would vote on each of the findings of fact separately.
Yes.
They would make a motion to say either, I make a motion to determine that unnecessary hardship would result from a strict application of the ordinance, and then you would take a vote on it, and then you do the...
And state a reason why.
Yeah, and state a reason why. That's, that's where the motions come in.
So basically, someone needs to make a motion, either in affirmative or...
Just to clarify, unnecessary hardship would be that he couldn't build a pool, or that would be the unnecessary hardship, right?
Uh, you would probably clarify that in your...
Yeah, the, you know, unnecessary hardship, because he couldn't build a pool, but then you also need to find, you know, why is that hardship there? And that's because either, uh, the house was built, uh, further back from the front because of the, the uniqueness of that lot. Or, and the, the opposite, it's just like the other lots, it's the same size. They're smaller, but they're all the same size, so it's not unique. And you can always modify plans, build a smaller pool.
So, is there anyone who wishes to make a motion? So, I'll make a motion that there are not practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter of this chapter. Anyone second that motion?
And do you have any reasons you want to state one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, so, I don't think that the hardship, I think the hardship, if there is one, is a result of the applicant's own action. And I also don't find any sort of hardship that would be peculiar to the applicant's property. I haven't seen evidence to see those two. And specifically, there are clearly houses that are as far back on property as his, they're close to it.
Okay.
So to clarify, we just need one person to project, is that where we are?
Yeah, and if, if there are...
The motion has to pass, though.
Yeah, the motion has to pass. And if that motion passes, that there are no practical difficulties, then that means there aren't practical difficulties. So if this motion passes, it'll get the...
Right, we're assigning this fact, which is fine.
Yeah.
We're just supposed to go through each and every, each one of them, though.
Yeah.
So, the motion is on the table, s- someone either needs to second, or we make a new motion.
Yep. Someone can either second that motion, or make a new motion.
Yeah, Ms., Mr. Spencer, so if we say there are not practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships, right? Um, and as, that motion, as David mentioned in that motion, um, you know, the hardship is the result of the applicant's own action, is what I thought I heard Mr. Humphries refer to.
And no peculiarities with the lot, he said those two.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and that would be an appropriate motion at that point?
Yes.
Okay, I, I would like to second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Gil, for the record, Mr. Gilboy has voted, uh, in opposition to the motion.
How did that go?
It was a three to, it was a three to one vote.
Okay.
So you were saying there were, let's just clarify this.
Uh, yeah, and you can do a clarifying motion if you want to, you could do a, a, you can also do a motion to say, a motion that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships.
I, I...
And, and we, we can do it that way, and get both of them on the record. And, and I have a feeling the vote's gonna be one to three. You want to do that?
I, I personally feel like, you know, I'm voting in favor of allowing the changes.
Right.
Allowing the, and I, and I just want to make sure my vote is, I'm voting that, that way.
It, it, it is clarified that way in the record, that you're, you're, you voted against the motion to not find that there was a hardship.
No, I feel there is a hardship.
Okay. And that is noted, that is noted by your vote in opposition.
And the others voted their, to fi, to make a finding that there were not.
So we'll clarify this. I'll make a motion that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the chapter.
All those that agree...
No, I need someone to second that motion, do we not?
Yes.
So now, you're, so just for the record, you are making a motion in the, in the affirmative to find out who on, who on the board agrees that the, that, that this finding of fact is in the affirmative?
And you can make a second without agreeing to the finding, you can make a second and vote against.
I'm just making a motion.
Yeah, and you make a motion and vote.
Maybe I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All against...
So, just, just for the record, two, two, it's, it's a two to two vote, that there is a, that there is a hardship?
Look, I'm saying there is no hardship.
Then you need to vote in opposition.
Okay, got it.
So all the, will you recall that? All those in favor of finding there's a...
All those in favor of finding that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who feel that there are no practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships, please say nay. Nay?
Nay.
One more. Tom?
Yeah, nay.
Okay.
Okay.
So that motion fails to read your, to the affirmative, okay?
So we'll move on to item number two. The variance is in harmony with the intent, I'm sorry.
David, real quick, so your motion passed, is that correct, three to one?
Not, no, we, the, the, the initial, the initial motion did pass, but we wanted to clarify it, so a clarifying motion was made to approve, to find the first finding of fact in the, in the affirmative, but that vote failed.
Wrong, yeah, it looks like you're gonna make, are you gonna make the next...
They, they really also made it, they really also made it in the affirmative for cl, just for clarity sake.
Okay, all right.
That was my fault, yeah.
So, the variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent preserves its spirit. I'll make a motion to say that the variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the chapter and preserves its spirit. Anyone want to second the motion?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, 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 you guys are, okay, sir, you do find it's in harmony, okay, I'm gonna make sure we're clear. Okay?
It's in harmony.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, so that one would pass?
Um, is that, uh, Chair, how did you vote on this?
The variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the chapter, I, I say nay.
All right. That one passes, but by a three-one, that's the way I...
Yeah, I thought, that's what I keep to.
Okay.
So the motion passed three to one, okay.
We have item number three. In granting of the variance, the public safety and welfare has been assured, and substantial justice has been done. Would anybody else like to make a motion upon that, since I want?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, this request is in the granting of the variance, that the public safety and work, welfare have been assured, and substantial justice has been done.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All against, say nay, now it's a nay. Item number four, the reasons set forth in the application in the hearing justify the granting of a variance, and that the variance is a minimum one that will make possible the reasonable use of land and structures. the reasonable use of land or structures, someone like to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that the reason set forth in this application in the hearing justify the granting of a variance, and that the variance is a minimum one that will make possible the reasonable use of land or structures.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And I would say nay.
Okay, now, you've gone through the four findings?
Is somebody, Austin, did we second that motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Maher did.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, so as Chaplain was saying, since they vote, since they found at least one in the, go ahead, Chaplain.
Yeah, now you need to make a motion, really, to grant or deny, and that one you can do it to deny.
Yeah.
Uh, because you don't have the requisite numbers, but you can vote as you, as you saw fit on the overall ordinance.
So I'll make a motion to deny the variance based on the fact that we do not find that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the chapter, someone want to second that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed?
All opposed?
Three, three to one.
Okay, is that it?
That is it.
All right, thank you for permitting, I gotta fly at 8:30, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna bug out. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
Before y'all sign off, we would need, um...
We need a motion to adjourn.
Well, unless let, do a motion to allow the Chair to, do we want the Chair or the Planner to confirm in writing, we're supposed to send a writing?
I would, I would recommend that we head do that.
Okay.
So just a motion to authorize the, the Planner?
And this is...
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Planner to...
Confirm, yeah, confirm the writ decision?
Confirm the writ decision.
I'll second that motion to confirm the decision, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any other business we need to conclude?
That is it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting with the Board of Adjustment.
At 7:16 PM.
7:16 PM, all in, well, I need a second.
I'll second it.
We have seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
We'll see you in five years.
Yeah.
And that...